Okay, we're ready to go. Welcome to Lincoln City Council Meeting of the 26th of March 2018. Let us all rise for a pledge allegiance followed by a period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with LB 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month, like today, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor plan for a future agenda. So just so you note, on the agenda, the first item is anyone wishing to speak on the consent agenda may do so. We're going to do those after their call. All right. Please call the first item.
All right. Just a reminder to the public, those who come forward to give their testimony, if you would please clearly state your name and address and sign in on the sign-in sheet on the podium, we would greatly appreciate it. Our first item of business is our public hearing consent agenda, items one through two.
Would anyone like to testify on these items? Next item, please.
All right. If not, we can vote on these items. Item 1A was introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Jane. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Items 2A through 2D were introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Lyrian, seconded by Jane. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next then are public hearing resolutions. Item 4A, accepting the report of new impending claims against the city and approving disposition of claims set forth for the period of March 1st through the 15th, 2018.
Is there anyone here who has a claim against the city who wants to speak? Please come forward. Just come to one of the microphones, you're great.
Good evening.
Good evening. You can fill that out when you're done testifying, so.
Okay. Landon Nelson, address 4721 South 58th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68516. I have a claim for a broken tire rim. I hit a large pothole. Basically, communication between the city attorney's office and myself, the roads department, the morning of February 15, 7:15 a.m. on my way to work, I hit a unusually large pothole on 70th and O Street. Got my car to the shop, called the city roads office, notified them of the pothole. Later wrote a request to the city attorney's office asking for retribution. It was an aluminum alloy rim, so they couldn't bend it. It was only $350, but, you know, still substantial, I guess. And back and forth, I was notified that the roads department was supposed to have repaired all of the holes in that area on February 13th. To me, wallet being an accident is still an act of negligence. I did face a financial impact. I was asked to prove that there wasn't only, you know, a pothole and, you know, the city's responsible, but that it was negligent. I was then kind of deferred to the fact that, well, maybe there was weather on Valentine's Day. Pulled weather reports, there was nothing significant that a pothole would have formed on that day. And, you know, I've gone through all the steps to, to be exact, and provide facts, and just looking for a little indemnity, I guess.
Okay. Are there questions for Mr. Nelson? Thank you, sir. We have a consultation with our city attorney. Want to give us the city's perspective on this?
Yes, Jeff Kirkpatrick, city attorney. 'Tis the season for potholes, and we've received a couple. And this was a claim that we received, he had his accident on the 15th, and our records indicate that we had a city crew out there on the 16th. And just to be clear, we're not contesting the fact that there was a pothole there. In fact, we filled it on the 16th, or taken any issue with his estimate for repair that he submitted to the city. The question is, it always is with potholes, is do we have an opportunity to fill those? The different fact scenario here, different than what we usually see, is that we did receive several reports on the stretch of 70th between O and Vine on the 5th. But our, and our records indicate that we filled those potholes on the 13th, which is a bigger gap than what we usually see. We're usually out there in the next few days. The reason for that was the weather pattern where we were out, basically either, our crews were either moving snow or applying de-icer during that period because we had a period of moisture and a lot of freezing. And so what appears to have happened is we filled it on the 13th, popped again by the 15th, and so we hit a hole, and it indicates it was a rather large hole on the 15th. We went out and filled it again on the 16th. That's not unusual when you're considering what's going on when you have a period of freeze thaw. And when we fill these during the winter, we don't fill them permanently. We put in what we call a cold mix, and that we know when we put that in, it's only temporary, but it's better than not doing anything. And you can't put in a hot mix when your, your low temperature, as it was on the 14th, is 21 degrees. And so unusual situation, but what appears to have happened is had some potholes develop on the 5th, probably got worse between then and the 13th when we were able to go out and fill those. We filled them on the 13th, at least one opened up again by the 15th, and because it was a prior existing pothole, it was actually probably a fairly good pothole when we came out and filled it on the 16th. So that's what we know about that.
Indeed.
So I'm just wanting to clarify, this pothole that he, Mr. Nelson, hit was in that section of road between O and Vine Street that was repaired on the 13th?
It was. Now, that's a fairly lengthy section of road, so we can't identify the exact pothole, but we know we received a number of complaints from February 5th on, and we sent a crew out on the 13th, and they filled all the potholes on the 13th that they could identify between O and Vine.
So I understand when you say they're only temporary, but two days?
Depends on the weather. I mean, you could fill a pothole and it could be there for months, but if you get the right freeze thaw cycle, it can pop out fairly quickly. It's a matter of moisture and temperature extremes.
That's disturbing.
It's the best we can do, and it's better than doing nothing.
Are we, and maybe this is for Public Works? Are, yes, thank you. Because I'm guessing that, that Mr. Kirkpatrick may not know, is there a way to tell if this was done with our new fancy machine, or?
Miki Esposito, Director of Public Works and Utilities, during the winter weather, we have limitations in using the spray patchers. They're, the emulsion is temperature-based, so it's more effective in warmer climates. We do continue to use the cold patch in the winter.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to testify on a claim they have before the city?
Can we testify on his?
You can testify if you wish to testify. You have the same five minutes everybody else gets.
Richard Escovell, 733 West Coming. I have attended many of these council meetings, and it has been specifically claimed by this council that if the pothole is reported prior to the accident, that it is a valid claim because you have turned many of them down in the past because it wasn't reported beforehand. Second, he assumed that that pothole was filled. He didn't, he was asked if that pothole was filled, and he said they were filled between O Street and Vine. I believe there is enough question in this that this man should be reimbursed for his room.
Thank you.
Staff question.
Question for staff?
Miki, can you come back up? Thank you. Yeah, you bet. When you send, when your department sends a crew out to patch a reported area of road, and it's a stretch of road, not a particular location with a photograph, for instance, do they actually cover every inch of that area and look for all the potholes? Is there a chance that they would just fill some of them and not the rest? And do you know anything specifically about this particular incident? I don't know anything specifically about this incident, but generally, our crews know where potholes, where street problems exist, and what stretches are more cumbersome or problematic than others, because that's the, that's where they're responding all the time. And as you know, when you rehabilitate a street, you're not responding to potholes all the time. So our maintenance crews generally know the stretches and the areas where we have problems. My guess is they probably utilize the spray patcher during those warmer climate, during a warmer climate, and when they pop during a freeze thaw, then they responded with cold patch. And unfortunately, it is a Band-Aid to something that really deserves a cure, like a rehabilitation, when you have a stretch of road like that.
Jane?
So, Miki, I'm a little surprised that cold patch doesn't last more than two days, even with the freeze and the thaw that may have occurred. Is that a clear indication that a freeze and a thaw did occur over the night of the 13th and the 14th?
Usually it is. I, again, I don't know the specifics of this case, but if you recall, 2015, 2016, when Highway, prior to Highway 2 getting completely rehabbed, that was just a nightmare scenario during the winter when we were just out there every other day following a snow event. And it really is, we are limited by the materials that we have and the technology that we have. Now, in warmer, warmer situations, we have a lot more enduring pothole repair because of the spray patcher equipment, but cold patch is, is what we can do in the wintertime, and they do pop very easily.
So was there a storm event? I don't recall, on the 13th, the 14th, and then on the 15th? Was there?
So that's, Jeff has those facts. I, I don't have those facts with me, but it sounds like there was some winter weather through there, and?
Do you have those details?
Yeah, there were no storm events where we had crews out. We had crews out on the 10th, 9th, 10th, and 11th, so there was moisture being, we were dealing with on the 9th, 10th, and 11th. And then when you had following up on that, is when you look at the evenings of the 13th, we would have patched on the 13th, but, so you have the evenings of the 13th and the 14th. On the 13th, you had a low temperature of, I believe it was 19 degrees, and then on the 14th, it was 21 degrees. So those are fairly low temperatures when you have moisture mixed in with that.
And I would just say, when you have dew point and high humidity with freezing temperatures, that can cause a freeze thaw. So you don't necessarily have to see precipitation, and I can check what we have in past climate history, but you don't necessarily have to have precipitation for there to be moisture to pop a pothole.
If you can read the dew point.
Oh, my gosh.
No, I need my glasses.
So then what is the typical volume of traffic in that stretch on a, would it be a Wednesday and a Thursday during the middle of the week?
I wouldn't know. You mean as far as traffic volumes?
On Sundays?
Yeah, a ton. We have a lot of traffic, but I can look specific.
Okay.
I'll look specifically. And it can be caused by heavy trucks and running over, you know, by traffic. There's a lot of variables, but really, again, the cure is rehabilitation. We need funding for rehab, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
There you go.
Is there anyone else who has a claim pending before the city that wishes to speak? Next item, please.
All right. That concludes our public hearing. We can move into the voting session. Item 4A, the report of claims against the city for the period of March 1st through the 15th, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Benny. Discussion? Cindy?
So, first of all, I just want to point out that $350 for a rim is a lot of money. I mean, I remember buying cars for that. So I'm so sorry that you are paying that kind of money for your tire, but I, I am concerned about this. I understand about having to have notice. I'm concerned about what happened to that whole nine days between the time we received notice and that this actually was filled. If it was unfilled, I mean, I'm surprised we don't have more claims up here, but, but I, I understand, they repaired him on the 13th. No one reported again till after his accidents on the 15th, and we repaired again on the 16th. I don't know what happened after that, but I understand how the negligence works, and although I'm, I'm sorry that you had to go through this expense, Mr. Nelson, it clearly, maybe we need to work on getting something that'll work a little bit better on our potholes, but I don't think that we can dispute what the city attorney has come up with at this time, so.
Other discussion? Please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next then are ordinance's third reading, item 6A, street and alley vacation 17011, vacating the 15-foot right-of-way adjoining the south sides of lots 7 and 8 of Sky Ranch Acres Edition located on the east and west sides of Beechcraft Road, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Lyrian, seconded by Benny. Discussion? Cindy?
Thank you. So I know that we delayed, when we delayed this, there was some question about, you know, dealing and so forth in the, in the city's right to do a quitclaim deed, and if the right folks had brought this forward. Can you tell me what has transpired since that meeting?
Well, we, to my knowledge, we have not heard anything further from the person that was challenging the, the title. I would tell you, as we looked into it future, further, and.
I'm Abby Luttrell, Assistant City Attorney. There has been some back and forth. There was Nebraska Title was involved. They issued to the neighbor a, it's, it's not title insurance, it's just last deed of record, and it basically covered the same things we talked about at the, here at the public hearing the last time, that there is a cloud on this title. It has not changed the position of the planning department or city law that we at least have some interest in this 15-foot parcel that we can convey by quitclaim.
And are we exposed to any liability if we convey that interest to someone who turns out not to be the rightful owner?
No. The quitclaim deed makes no promises of any, there's no warranty in that document.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Item 6B is text amendment 18003, amending chapter 27.02 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to definitions by amending section 27.02.160 to revise the definition of office, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Benny, seconded by Jane. Before we have comments and vote on this, I've asked our city attorney to comment on this because I was concerned I might have a conflict of interest because this affects my business, but.
It, yes, you have a business and office, and this affects a lot of offices. And so when we discussed this, I, I think I made two points. One is that Lincoln is not a huge community, and it's difficult, if you say, well, we're fixing a street, I drive down that street on my way to and from work, that affects me, you cannot recuse, or you should not recuse yourself from that just because you use that street. The second point I would make is that it does not convey on your particular business or your sector of business any particular advantage. It does not advantage you over other people in your line of work. It doesn't advantage you over other people that might have a discretionary business that would arguably compete with you. And the third thing I would say is, it's clear from the council rules that the presumption is that you will vote unless you have a significant conflict of interest. And it's the opinion of the law department that this does not rise to a significant conflict of interest.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Item 6C is approving a long-term lease for a site for Fire Station 11, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Benny, seconded by Carl. Discussion? This is a good thing. Please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next then is item 6D, amending title line of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to the prohibition of devices which convert firearms to multi-burst fire, introduced by Gaylor Baird and Raybold.
So moved.
We have a motion to amend.
Okay. Let's do this. How about one of you move it and the other one second?
Move approval.
Moved by Jane, seconded by Lyrian.
Okay.
Now.
For this item, we have a motion to amend number two to respond to some of the issues and concerns raised previously, so I think the clerk is going to distribute hard copies of that last week. So I'd like to move motion to amend number two.
Second.
Moved by Lyrian, seconded by Jane. Discussion?
And just to clarify, this clarifies the background of the ordinance and allows for a later effective date to allow individuals to turn in or dispose of their multi-burst trigger activation devices, and, you know, this basically delays the effective date of the ordinance for one month. That came at the recommendation and through conversation with law enforcement personnel who felt that that would give people in our community plenty of time and notice to get rid of any of these devices that they may possess, and it, it doesn't require that they turn them into LPD. And it's a, it's a simple approach and easier for people to understand and work with in an amnesty program. This also will, at their recommendation, involve significant advertising following the passage of this ordinance so that people are aware of the new law, and in the regular amnesty days that the police department does hold, just a couple of them a year, people will be allowed to drop off these kinds of devices at those LPD amnesty days should they wish to do so.
Okay. Discussion? Cindy?
Thank you. Can you tell me where the, the new effective date is in this?
Yep, that is in section four. Says it'll take effect and be enforced from May 1st.
Okay. Thank you. So I would, I would like to move to amend this, and I don't know if this is appropriate time to do that, or if I need to wait till this is voted on.
You can offer a friendly amendment.
You can amend.
Well, we, our council, the city attorney does not like friendly amendments.
Such things are friendly amendments.
To him, they are unfriendly.
You can move an amendment.
Okay.
To this, before we vote on this.
Yeah, okay. So I would like to move to amend this date to reflect a date 120 days rather than 30 days, if I could get a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Moved by Cindy, seconded by Benny.
And, and I'll tell you my reasoning for this, a couple of things. We did, of course, heard last week some concerns about folks that needed time to even know that this was on the books, and this is the part where we're talking about protecting the good guys, ones that have lawfully purchased these items with no ill intent. We have, I've done some research on this and, and visited with, with some of our law enforcement and our public safety director, and found that there haven't been any crimes committed with these type of accessories in Lincoln, or in fact, in Nebraska. And in fact, it wasn't on radar of us or law enforcement until October of last year. And so at this point in time, we don't know how many there are. Though, Director Cassidy did find out for me, there are a couple that are in one of, at least one of the, the gun stores here, and when I called out there and asked them, are you able to even dispose of this in 30 days? They said, first of all, they informed me they cannot return them to the manufacturer. They could possibly drive them out of town, but of course, they don't want to lose money. I mean, they invested and didn't want to lose money, and it would take them, they thought, longer than 30 days to, to dispose of it and, or destroy it, which is something they may have to do as an option also. And they did indicate that they, that there were, you know, they know of many that, that use these for sporting in, in the area, and so we want to make sure that we get that word out to those folks. I, I don't think 30 days is enough time. In addition, last Friday, the ATF talked about the rule that it is promulgating and putting in front of the public for public comment, which will be a 90-day period. And our language differs enough from the language that's in that. I'm concerned that, that our language will run afoul of the federal language, and I don't know that that's accurate, but, because they do have a comment period, and so I would like to get us past that comment period to 120 days, which I originally had said end of the year, and then I said six months, and this is, of course, only four months. So just gets us past those things. And do you need a date for that, Teresa?
You want 120 days from today?
Correct.
Okay.
Or from this meeting?
That's all I need. Does Larry need to accept that amendment, Jeff?
No, it's been moved and seconded. We all have to vote on it. Further discussion on this? Jane?
Well, you know, I'm, I'm reluctant to support this for a, a number of reasons. I know that we have reached out to, to law enforcement, Chief Blimeister and, and Tom Cassidy to get their, their opinion on, you know, is that 30-day a sufficient amount of time to allow people to have the opportunity to either destroy the, the item, the accessory, or to turn it into law enforcement that would readily accept it? And I think per the conversations that we've had, they felt that it was a sufficient amount of time. And I know certain retailers that probably sell bump stocks or binary triggers or trigger cranks, you know, they have usually with, an option with their wholesalers to, to return an item to their wholesaler. They might have to pay a restocking fee, or they can always get a credit on additional purchases from their supplier. So I don't think it is an onerous burden on any retailer to be able to, to work with their supplier or even the manufacturer on, on getting some reimbursable amount for removing that or even turning it into, to law enforcement if that's a decision that they so make. The other item that I wanted to address, you know, I do commend President Trump for, for trying to accelerate and push the ban on bump stocks. I think there were some surveys done of the American public, and 70% believe that bump stocks should be banned. They're an accessory, they are not considered a firearm, and so therefore, we have the legislative authority to do that. Otherwise, we wouldn't be doing that and standing in front of you all today saying that it is important. We've heard from a number of our constituents who feel that it is vitally important to take a proactive step, rather.
Can we limit our discussion to the delay?
Yes, and, but Cindy had.
We're gonna have the other stuff come again.
Cindy had addressed like three items in, in her concern. You know, we, we are aware that. Cindy had addressed like three items in, in her concern. You know, we, we are aware that the Department of Justice had pushed this forward. But, you know, unfortunately, if you look at, at the, the onerous burdens and steps that they must go through to even get this approved, you know, they're really on step three out of nine steps that they must go through. So they have to do a preparation of the proposed rule. And it's my understanding that that hasn't even taken place. So then, once they do the, the preparation of that proposed rule from the federal government side, it goes to step four, which is Office of Management, OMB. And it's a review of the proposed rule. So again, that'll take some time for them to actually do a review of the proposed rule. Then they get to step five, which is the actual publication of the proposed rule. And then during the following step, step six, that is where the public comment period starts. And that's usually a period of sixty days for the standard comment period. So we're talking sixty days once that publication of the proposed rule takes place. And so we, we are not even at that element at this point in time. Then after that comes step seven. It's a final rule, interim final rule, or direct final rule, rule. And that also takes an element of time for that to be reviewed and processed. Step eight is the interim final rule or direct final rule. And the OMB issues the executive order. And then there is a period of time where it goes to rule or direct a final rule. I know it, it sounds incredibly complicated, but it is not a simple procedure as I think President Trump had anticipated that he could issue that executive order and bump stocks would be banned. It is an onerous process. It's meant to be a transparent, but lengthy process. It is intended to include public comment, which I always think is a very good opportunity to include that. But it isn't such a quick process as we all think. And it would be somewhat lengthy. So I think what we're trying to do on the city council is, is move this forward and in a proactive way as possible.
Lyrian?
Could I have Tom Cassidy come up and maybe Jeff as well, just to speak to this issue of what happens if federal action does go into effect and how that affects local laws?
Tom Cassidy, Director of Public Safety.
Tom, if, if there was a concern about running afoul of federal language, can you speak to your experience with what happens when federal laws are passed and local, local laws speak to the same issue? How we reconcile?
Well, what we would do here in Lincoln is we would issue a citation for the violation of the municipal ordinance with a court date. So the person would leave with a citation. We'd, we'd confiscate the contraband, in this case, a bump stock or a trigger device. That would be tagged into evidence. And the person would have a court appearance date assigned that's normally four weeks into the future. With federal law violations, basically what we do is we write a report and we send that to the United States Attorney for the District of Nebraska. Then the United States Attorney considers that, whether they're willing to prosecute, whether they need to take it before a federal grand jury and seek an indictment. It's a much more laborious and time-consuming process. So we normally opt for the local ordinance or the local statute instead of federal prosecution, except in very high-profile cases. There are cases that we investigate. Most of them involve drugs or conspiracies where we seek federal prosecution in lieu of state or local prosecution. But this is kind of offense where we would simply write a citation to the person that, that possessed the illegal device.
Okay. And Jeff, in terms of running afoul, is there a way to reconcile our issues locally?
Well, in terms of if there's a different definition, the federal versus the state, we would, I think the, the LPD would, would issue a citation or report in either case. But if you had a situation, for example, where this ordinance before you prohibits both your bump stocks and hellfire triggers, for example, and the federal regulation, for whatever reason, banned bump stocks but not hellfire triggers, then having this ordinance on the book, books would allow us to issue a citation for that device. Whereas if we were just relying on the federal regulation and there was a difference, we wouldn't be able to do that. And by the same token, you could envision a situation where our ordinance would have one definition, but they, the federal regulation would have a different one, which would actually encompass more devices.
And in that case, would we just revise our ordinance to include those definitions?
That would be one thing we could do. And the advantage of that would be serving as a way of reminding and enforcing for our local police officers what the definition was of what was actually illegal. So they would not miss one that was illegal under federal law.
Okay.
Probably the best example I can give you is we have lots of, of state statutes that are mirrored with municipal ordinances where a police officer could arrest someone for either of those. For example, drunk driving, misdemeanor assault, destruction of property or vandalism, disturbing the peace or disorderly conduct. These are crimes in both Nebraska state statutes and in the Lincoln Municipal Code. And we will invariably make those arrests under the Lincoln Municipal Code because it's simply easier for us to do.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Benny?
Yes, thank. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Cassidy, we have an amendment that talks about extending, lack of a better word, a probationary period or delaying the implementation of that. How does the Public Safety Director feel about the delay adding more time before we ask you to enforce this?
Well, I think that's a public policy issue. In, in my little world, if you are a person who owns one of these devices, you've been following this issue pretty closely. It was obvious when I talked to the firearms retailers here in Lincoln that they were all aware of it, acutely aware of it, knew that it was being discussed by the city council. And, you know, I, I can't imagine, I mean, it's not difficult to dispose of one of these devices. They're not very expensive. I think it'd be easy for someone to move it outside the city limits of Lincoln or to sell it or destroy it or give it to us. We hold amnesty days where we take in all sorts of firearms, ammunition, and other kinds of materials from people. We'll do that in the, in the very near future. So I don't think it's problematic for someone to divest themselves of this device if it becomes contraband within the next thirty days. On the other hand, one hundred and twenty days probably won't make any, any, any difference to that either. I am a little bit concerned, you know, when you have a delayed effective date, I think some people will take advantage of that to kind of put it off. And, you know, have we all done our taxes?
That's exactly what I was gonna pull out. Yeah, I haven't done my taxes yet. I've still got a few weeks, right?
Okay. Cindy, would you care to, they were still discussing the one hundred and twenty day delay.
Okay, well, I have questions that don't really have to do with the hundred, well, maybe it does. I had you go and check those different firearms dealers and see if, in fact, there were some bump stocks in Lincoln, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And did you visit with the dealer that had the bump stocks and talk about actually returning to the manufacturer?
I, I, I did not. I didn't ask him what he would do if the ordinance passed. He told me that he had two in stock right now.
Okay.
And stocking for sale. Someone used the term on the shelf. I don't, I don't think they have shelves at this retailer.
Oh, okay. One would hope.
Pretty sure they don't.
Okay. So because I, I did talk with the owner and they told me that they weren't able to return to it to the manufacturer or wholesaler. And so I'm just wanting to clarify, you didn't, you weren't told anything different?
No, and I, I'm not surprised by that either. And one of the other members of the council, I believe, asked me about that. And I think I told that council member, I can't remember whether it was Councilwoman Raybold or Councilwoman Gaylor Baird, but somebody asked me about that. And I said, I'd be surprised if a wholesaler would take a product like that back because if it's going to be banned here in Lincoln, maybe illegal federally, I, I wouldn't want to take it back either if I were a wholesaler.
Thank you.
Okay.
Tom, what do you think is the, the cost of a bump stock?
Oh, I checked.
Yeah.
Yeah. How much is it?
I, I Googled it in the back of the room and ninety-nine dollars will buy you a bump stock. And I imagine you can find them less expensive than that, but that's, that was the first hit that I found. I'm, I'm sure you can buy them more expensive than that too, but that seems to be about the going price.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So now I will call the roll on the motion to amend for the one hundred and twenty day delay. Please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
No.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
No.
Shob?
No.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
No.
Motion lost two to four.
Okay, now on the motion to amend number two. Have we discussed this enough or we want to discuss it more?
I, I would like to thank, I just wanted to thank Councilwoman Gaylor Baird for taking a look at the language because when we talked, the substitution came about as, as a result of some concerns with some language that was what I would say was very debatable. And so I wanted to thank her for amending it to, to change that introductory language. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. I would like to say something before we close.
Well, this is on the amendment. And we'll still have to vote on the main motion again, okay? So please call the roll on a motion to amend number two.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Okay, now discussion on the main motion.
Just a question before we do that. That was motion to amend number two. We also had a motion to amend number one.
It went away.
It went away. It's just gone.
Good place is one.
Cindy?
I think everyone has questions, so I don't know what order I'm in.
You're up first. Well, you're first, Cindy, so.
Okay. So I did have some concerns raised about the ordinance itself. And the ordinance language didn't change except to add the, the effective date. So I, I thought it would be better to address it once we had adopted the substitute amendment. So the questions are, and, and I don't know if, if the council members can answer this or not, that brought this forward. Does firearm, the word firearm in this, does it apply to handguns and rifles and pistols? Any of the three, all of the three, or just the semi-automatic AK, what is it, AK-15?
We'll just call them semi-automatic rifles.
Right. Or is it just semi-automatic rifle? But there are, I mean, there's a lot of semi-automatic firearms out there. And that's what I'm wondering to wonder. I'm wondering, does it encompass all those? Any device that causes any of those to be able to offer more than one round? I'm sorry? Can you answer that? No?
The question is, what is the definition of a firearm? I don't believe we have one in the code. Now, I haven't checked for that specifically, but when you look at the definitional section, which is included, there's a number of definitions, but including dangerous weapon, knife, stun gun. But there isn't a definition of firearm. So to answer your question, my interpretation, based on what I know today, is that we would apply that to pistols, rifles, long guns, shotguns, whether they were semi-automatic or single-shot.
Okay, so it'd apply to any firearm?
Actually, just for the record, semi-automatic is single-shot. One shot per trigger pull.
For trigger pull, yeah. So, okay. So then would it apply then to the drop-in triggers that competitive shooters use?
Depending on how they operated.
Okay, so the idea is that it allows them to pull the trigger competitively, pull it faster or cause it to be nearly as fast. So I'm just concerned that we're putting-
If there's taking two actions, if you're pulling the trigger twice for two shots, then the answer would be no. It wouldn't apply to those.
Okay. But if the, and so do you know how a drop-in trigger works?
I haven't run across that term.
Do, do either the councilwomen that introduce this know?
This would apply to binary triggers if you're trying to address that issue.
It, it's what?
This would apply to binary triggers if you're concerned about those.
Well, what I'm wondering is, because the question came to me, but from a competitive shooter, does it apply to drop-in triggers? Because if so, are we now, my concern is, if so, competitors that come into our community and use these drop-in triggers, are they going to run afoul of the law? And so my concern is, is Lincoln, are we now pushing Lincoln out of the possible locations where though we could host that type of event because those folks that use drop-in triggers, now they use them on handguns and so forth, that they would not be able to use those here without breaking the law?
Can I make a comment on that? Okay, drop-in triggers are generally a trigger upgrade that allows the trigger to be reset more quickly, but still maintains one trigger pull for one shot. I think what Lyrian's talking about in here is binary triggers where you, you pull the trigger, it fires once. You release the trigger, it fires again. Drop-in triggers for competition, and to my understanding, do not do that. And they would actually be banned from those kind of competitions you're discussing.
Binary triggers.
Binary triggers would.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Jane?
Well, you know, I just wanted to address what we were trying to accomplish. And I think when we talk about bump stocks or trigger cranks or any multi-burst device, it really is the intention of restricting a, a type of accessory or device that can increase the firing rate. And in the case of a bump stock, they're, they have been known to increase the firing rate tenfold to approximately four hundred to eight hundred rounds per minute. In 2010, the United States Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms and Explosives declared a bump stock is a firearm part and is not regulated as a firearm under the U.S. Gun Control or the National Firearms Act. And bump stocks, trigger cranks, and other similar devices are not firearms or firearm components, but rather separately purchased optional devices with the purpose and design of dramatically increasing the firing rate of an otherwise legal weapon to a firing speed and capability of unlawful weapons. So neither the, the bump stock or trigger cranks or Gat crank or multi-bursts are, are, they're are components of a gun in that if they are removed, the firearm will remain operable in the manner and speed as originally designed by the manufacturer. So we are all mindful of the Second Amendment. We are all concerned about protecting the Second Amendment. But the Second Amendment to the United States Constitution protects the rights of citizens to own and carry firearms. But because neither a bump stock or trigger crank or multi-burst is a firearm, they're accessories and they are not constitutionally protected. So we want to assure all those out in the audience that we do respect the Second Amendment. But these are accessories that can cause dramatic harm to those in our community. And that's why we took the stance that we took on making sure that we take every necessary precaution and protection for public safety. So I will support this amendment that we've worked on. And I also wanted to thank Cindy for your comments. I think you, you've helped us make it a better amendment and a, a better ordinance. And also Roy, thank you for your comments as well.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say that I had asked questions of staff before, but I did have a statement. And I don't worry, I don't mind waiting and where you want to fit me in, so.
Well, we'll hear from Benny first.
I have a couple of questions of Public Safety Director and Legal, if they would yield to a question or two or three or half dozen. Thank you, gentlemen. My question, if we pass this, one of you will be in charge of, or both of you will be in charge of enforcing it. So what, how does that play out? If I'm driving through Lincoln and I have a bump stock in my vehicle and I get stopped for speeding, am I also going to get cited for having a bump stock? And what is the penalty? What, what, what happens? That's in that hypothetical.
Well, you could be ticketed for possessing that device because it's illegal in the city limits. Now, police officers exercise discretion every day. And, you know, if we had someone who legitimately was from out of town and passing through and had a bump stock that was legal elsewhere, I, I think some officers might exercise their discretion and give that person a warning, explain to them that it's illegal to possess this device here in the city of Lincoln, and some would not. But, you know, the maximum penalty, I mean, in our case, it's a misdemeanor, so it would result in a citation. About eighty percent of the people that we arrest for misdemeanor violations, that's what happens. They receive a citation. The only time you wouldn't receive a citation is if you represent a risk of harm to others or you have a history of failing to appear in court. So basically, it's treated just like a ticket would be for being a minor in possession of alcohol or having a, you know, a one ounce of marijuana in your possession. You'd receive a citation with a court date from the officer.
And so receiving the citation means that you receive the citation, you sign it, you're free to go. And then you appear at your court date, as Mr. Cassidy said earlier, which is usually four weeks down the road. As far as what the penalty is, this is treated as a city misdemeanor. There's no special penalties. It just falls within all of our city misdemeanors in general, where you have a maximum penalty of five hundred dollar fine, six months in jail, or a combination thereof. So theoretically, a judge could say, I'm going to fine you five hundred dollars and ten days in jail. Or the, the judge could say, depending upon the facts and the- or the judge could say, depending upon the facts and the person's record, "I'm going to fine you $25, don't do it again." And so, we also give that discretion to the judge for city misdemeanors.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Cindy, then Carl.
Thank you. Carl, I'm sorry. So, we've had comments, and I've certainly had correspondence and business with people on both sides of this issue. And I just want to point out that the legislation is strictly symbolic, and I think we all know that. We've talked about that when Mr., the former Councilman Dan Marvin came forward. He said that, and that has been echoed. It wasn't brought forward at the request of law enforcement as a safety measure request. Certainly, we had some testimony tonight, but even when this was introduced, there wasn't law enforcement coming forward that was asked to come forward to testify in favor of it. And that was true when it was taken up at the state level also. In fact, wherever it's come up, that's where, there hasn't been law enforcement bringing it forward. Thankfully, as I stated, there has been no known crime committed with bump stocks or trigger cranks in Lincoln, or in fact, in the state of Nebraska. And most of us, including law enforcement, hadn't heard about it until October. And since we know now, so in my research, I realized that there are people in the area that do own them. I know that there was no mal-intent from those who purchased them, and I don't think that any of us want to indicate that in any way that this ordinance represents that we believe that anyone that currently has one or is in possession of one had any mal-intent. And then, of course, we have the ATF. They have created the rules, and the actual rule will be published this week, is my understanding, which we received out of Washington, D.C., and there'll be a 90-day public hearing. So, I want to thank, I appreciate, council members, Larian, Gaylor Baird, and Raybold for following the lead of our president to try and do something, even though we all know that banning bump stocks don't really cure and really solve the problem. And the reason is because bump stocks are not the problem, and neither are guns or knives or computers or cars. The problem is the condition of the human heart, and that we have created a culture that lacks appreciation of the true value of every human life. And we've created a culture where people feel angry, depressed, and alone. And fortunately, research actually shows that since the 1990s, deaths from guns, and specifically deaths of children by guns, has dramatically decreased since 1994. And so, and I realize this is a very emotional issue for folks, but it has decreased. That's what the research shows. Unfortunately, what has happened during that same period is that deaths by suicide have continued to increase, and especially among young people, and it has become the number-two cause of death of young people behind car crashes for children ages 15 to 24. And suicide by the elderly is equally disturbing and alarming. Did you know that it's estimated that suicide rates by the elderly are expected to climb to 11,000 a year or one death every 48 minutes as the population continues to age? A young person in the United States kills himself or herself on average every one hour and 48 minutes. And one in 65 children ages 10 to 14 commit suicide each year. Those are heartbreaking statistics. And tragically, some children choose to take others with them. And why do they do that? Depression, anxiety, hopelessness, isolation. And what we're finding, and I know we hear about bullying all the time, that that bullying or peer victimization of children and adolescents is associated with higher rates of suicidal thought, suicide attempts, and anger. And nearly one in three students reports being bullied during each school year. And over 34% of students report experiencing cyberbullying during their lifetime. But how do we fix that? Because we even have adults that are bullying one another, and even as we cry out to stop bullying, we see, we have seen nationwide a culture of those who devalue life when they bully women and subordinates. We continue to see adult workers who believe it's okay to bully and harass coworkers because it's just boys being boys. There are parents who are modeling cyberbullying to their children. There have been teachers bullying students. There have been students allowed to bully teachers. And over the last two years, we've seen people lashing out and bullying one another in person and on social media simply because they have differing views on political issues. Perhaps as a society, we really don't know how to fix it, and that's why, what we really should be working on, all of us, not on bump stocks or guns or computers or cars. We should be uniting to take responsibility for creating a culture that devalues human life and begin to work together to model for our children how to value every person and work harder on building relationships than on building bright, shiny new things to look at and places to go. I will support this legislation, but I support it knowing that in passing this symbolic legislation, we're really only making ourselves feel better. Because we are not addressing the real problems that leave our children and our elderly feeling depressed, isolated, and angry. To those members of the city who feel like we're taking away Second Amendment rights by banning bump stocks, I understand your concerns, and I share them, but I want to remind you that these are accessories, not firearms. As the council members who introduced this legislation have assured us in these hearings, they consider this an accessory only and are not intending to move to take away your rights to bear arms, nor should we. That's not the role of your city government should play. We know that those who may have bump stocks now have them strictly for sporting purposes and have no ill intentions. With that in mind, throughout this process, I have researched and worked hard to propose changes to the legislation to protect your rights and to keep the city from turning good people into criminals. Some of those efforts have been implemented and others have not. At the end of the day, we all want to protect the public safety. The federal government is taking steps to regulate these accessory devices, and today, we'll follow the lead and do our part. Thank you.
Carl?
Okay, thank you. So, I want to thank, I want to thank our community. Because you have been here and you've expressed your opinions about something that's extremely important to a great number of people in the community. People feel very passionately about this issue. I want to thank you for sharing your thoughts and your feelings about it. So, your interest is, I think, very, very fitting for at least a couple of different reasons. First of all, according to the constitutions of both the United States and the state of Nebraska, people have the legal right to keep and bear arms. Therefore, we have to tread very lightly in this arena, make sure that we are careful in what we're doing. When Justice Scalia wrote the majority opinion in the Heller case, a case which declared unconstitutional a ban in the District of Columbia for keeping handguns in private homes, Justice Scalia stated that the Second Amendment is not unlimited. And he also specifically stated that prohibiting carrying dangerous and unusual weapons would not violate the Second Amendment. For example, laws prohibiting machine guns, that would be constitutional. Accordingly, placing limits on other devices, as we've heard, that are not even firearms, that would, that would not be seen as unconstitutional. Particularly where those devices are, help to transform firearms into dangerous and unusual weapons. So, that's the first point. The second one is that acknowledging, as Cindy has recognized, that we live in a troubled world, a dangerous world, a world whose dangers seem to keep coming closer and closer to us and our homes. Mass shootings in and around schools, shopping centers, restaurants, concerts, nightclubs, job sites, and even churches. All of these things help to create fears and anxieties, so much so that for many people, no place seems safe. The ordinance before us makes it illegal in Lincoln to sell or possess certain accessories to firearms that transforms weapons into dangerous and unusual weapons. One summer, I worked as a, when I was in college, worked at a YMCA camp, taught young boys how to take care of firearms, how to clean them, how to respect them, and how to shoot them. And the thing that we're working on, for the most part especially, was accuracy. Being as accurate as you possibly can in firing that gun, making sure that the target was struck right where you were seeking to strike it. When, in looking at bump stocks, for example, those guns are not intended to be accurate at all. They're just intended to shoot a whole lot of bullets. That's not what I was teaching those boys. That's not what I think we want to be teaching in our community. I support gun ownership, always have, always will, for personal safety and recreational use. But I just can't find any rationale for these devices. They don't make us safer in this community, and I think that's what our purpose here is, to try to make this community as safe as possible. It's been suggested that this might be feel-good legislation, and I agree that the ordinance is limited in its scope. But it's a step in the right direction. It's a step to help make this community safer. It's not the last thing we should do. We still have a need to make our schools safer, safer in other parts of our community. But it's one thing we can do. Thank you.
Jane?
Well, I think Carl said it beautifully. I think of my father, you know, as a child growing up in Lincoln, and we would go out on excursions, and every time we would drive back in and cross the border of Lancaster County or get to the city limits, my father would always say, "Lincoln and Lancaster, the city and county of law and order." And, you know, that's always struck with me, because I think the city of Lincoln, we've always been very acutely aware of the role that we play in our state, and I think we are leading and very mindful of trying to keep our citizens safe. And as we recognize, there are so many other issues in our complex society that we need to address in a comprehensive way, this is one step in the right direction and allows us to continue to be the city and county of law and order.
Larian?
Thank you. When I was 19, I lost someone I loved to gun violence. And in my life since then, I have worked in after-school programs, trying to help kids on a path to college from a young age. I've tutored young students from low-income communities. I've worked to raise money for programs like Friendship Home that allow women, who are often the victims of gun violence, to flee their abusers successfully. I've raised money for the Children's Museum so that kids from lower-income communities can enjoy some of the same activities that many of our children who are more economically privileged can enjoy. And yes, I can't agree more that this is a complicated issue, reducing gun violence. It requires all of us to step up, to be better parents and neighbors, friends, and support. We all need to have, play a role in this, and this requires a multifaceted approach. And there is a role for good policy. This policy we've been discussing is intended to promote public safety. And more specifically, it's intended to close a loophole in our laws that allows civilians to modify semi-automatic weapons so that they can function like machine guns, which are capable of significant death and destruction if used improperly by people who want to do violence to others. When we first brought this item forward to the public in response to a call from a member of our public and asked for support from the council and from you all, we did hit the pause button a few days later after the president made a similar call. Maybe he was following us, Cindy, I'm not sure. Maybe he was following Columbia, South Carolina, which did this. Maybe he was following the call of Tucson, Arizona, which is trying, has attempted to do this. Or some of the other states like California or Illinois, or New Jersey, or Washington, that have either done this or expressed interest. But regardless, I am glad that we in Lincoln are moving forward to protect our neighbors and our children. Because people are tired of waiting for the federal government to get this done. And yes, before the Las Vegas shooting last October, almost no one, not even our law enforcement professionals necessarily, knew about bump stock-type devices and that they were able to convert regular firearms into machine guns. But now, today, almost everybody knows and is well-aware, including those who would wish to do great harm in public places, whether it's our schools, our houses of worship, our chambers, our rail yard, our arena. We have got to do our part to protect our children and our neighbors and keep them safe. We heard on Saturday from over a thousand of our neighbors here in Lincoln calling for us to take action to reduce gun violence. There are many ways to answer that call, and this is one of them. And I'm pleased that we're going to answer that call tonight.
Please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Our resolutions on first reading are Items 7A and 7B. Ordinance's first reading and related resolutions are Items 8A through E. Our pending list dates certain are Items 9A through 9C. And our pending list are Items 10A through 10C. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda and not plan to appear for a future agenda may do so at this time.
Okay, so before, as we begin public comment, let me set some, remind everyone of a couple of things. First of all, if you're going to comment, please come forward to the front two rows so we know who is wanting to speak. That way, we won't have some hesitation in the back. And the next thing is, please keep in mind that if you mention bump stocks, my job as the chair is to call you out of order and end your testimony. So, we'll take public comment now. Please come forward if you intend on speaking. And someone can come right to the microphone. And you can sign in after you give your testimony, please.
My name's Corey Raymond. I live at 3100 South 54th here in Lincoln. I brought my group, not my group, a group of parents came with us today. We call ourselves Parents United for Greater School Safety. It's a really great group of people that just want, well, it's like, I'm sure like we all want is greater, make sure our kids are safe. You know, today, I got a call, I got an email about Pound Elementary was locked down. I got another email that Calvert, where my six-year-old goes, they're doing a lockout, and you had to go get your own child and walk him out. I went down to Calvert, and there was all sorts of police help because of the homicide that happened three blocks away from Calvert. And I thought about my six, you know, my, his mom was texting me, and, you know, your parents, so you've all put yourself in this position. And I was thinking, you know, about my six-year-old, this is how stupid this is to me, that I spent $100, $125 for a tactical backpack. And I'm thinking, well, I hope he holds that, you know, real close to him. And I knew, I knew that the threat had passed, but the fact that I'm thinking that... And I knew, I knew that the, the threat had passed, but the fact that I'm thinking that, you know, I spent that much money, which I'm happy to do for my six-year-old, for a Kevlar backpack is, is absurd to me. And I don't necessarily blame anyone in particular, but, and I appreciate the city recognizing that there's steps that we can take. I really appreciate the mayor's office, who has reached out to us to have some discussions about where the city can go with SROs. Mr. Christensen, I appreciate you offering to come talk to us as well, and we're going to take you up on that. I appreciate the school board, who has listened to our ideas. I believe they've implemented some. Chief Bleibmeister was nice enough to meet with us a couple of weeks ago and, and give us kind of a lay of the land and, I don't want to say ideas, but explain where he's coming from. There's a few different people in our group that are going to talk after me, and our, our main thrust right now is that we're asking the city to consider hiring more police officers, specifically school resource officers. I've brought people that have had experience with that, school resource officers that impacted them thirty years ago that they still talk to, that they still respect. And I think that there's more just, a, a school security officer is, or school resource officers, more than just security, it's being a role model. In, in an era when we have so many kids who look at the police as the enemy, you know, who look at police that, that they cause harm, to me, there's nothing greater in community policing than my six-year-old, my thirteen-year-old having a law enforcement member in their school to see what a role model they can, they can be. About a month ago, my thirteen-year-old looked at me. He asked, "Why don't you people do something?" And he's right, why don't we do something? And I could have jumped on Facebook and gotten to a gun argument, I guess, seemed like a colossal waste of time to me. And there's a plenty of noise out there. So, this is the route we, this is, this is the path that we picked. There's, there's certain things that the city can do, the state can do, the feds can do, the school board can do, and this is our group asking the city of Lincoln to consider ask, adding more police officers. So, as Mr. Eskridge said, no place seems safe. There, there should be one place that seems safe, and that's, that's Calvert Elementary, that's Pound, that, that's, that's all the schools here, that when we drop off our kids, we know that they're safe. And, and when I drove up there and I saw two police cruisers sitting in front of Calvert after that shooting, I felt good, you know, and I, and I appreciate that. And I have no doubt, you know, I'm friend, as, as friendly as a defense attorney can be with a police officer here in Lincoln, I have no doubt that if something happened, that the law enforcement in this community would not hesitate to go in and save our children. I have zero doubt about that. It's just a matter of if they get there in time. Again, I appreciate your time and listening to me. I'm not going to be bothering you next week because I'm going to be down turkey hunting, and so, but again, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next testifier.
Good evening. I'm Cheryl Bullard, twenty-seven oh nine Kipling Circle, Lincoln, Nebraska, six eight five one six. I come before you tonight in support of the addition of more school resource officers, which I'll refer to as SROs, in the Lincoln Public Schools. As a grandparent of a first grader in Lincoln Public Schools, and in light of the current national situation with school safety, I am very concerned for the safety, not only of my grandchild, but for all the students, staff, and visitors to any of the Lincoln Public Schools facilities and their activities. As you know, currently, the Lincoln Police Department collaborates with the Lincoln Public Schools to place an SRO in all the Lincoln Public High Schools, and that is, there's six of those. These are full-time positions with a specific officer assigned to each one of the schools. As for our elementary and middle schools, according to LPD, Lincoln Police Department, beat officers currently are encouraged, if they're in the neighborhood and have some time, to stop by the schools and check in with the students and staff. But at this time, there are no dedicated visits to elementary or middle schools. So, what can we do to increase the number of SROs in the LPS system? I went online to do some research and found a national organization called the National Association of School Resource Officers, which is a not-for-profit that was founded in nineteen ninety-one. It provides training to school-based law enforcement officers to promote safer schools and safer children. They recommend that first, each SRO should be an active sworn law enforcement officer. And secondly, they recommend that rather than arming school faculty or staff, that sufficient federal, state, and/or local funding be made available to place at least one carefully-selected, specially-trained SRO in each school in the nation. Now, LPS has six high schools, twelve middle schools, and thirty-nine elementary schools. So, when you add just that group of those three types of schools together, we have fifty-seven total. As I said earlier, we currently have only six high schools, and these six high schools alone now account for only twenty-nine percent of the total LPS students. So, if we would obtain an SRO for each of the middle schools, this will increase the number of students that are covered by SROs to fifty-one percent. So, more than half of our students would be covered. So, what would it take to get this achieved? How could LPD and LPS, which currently share costs for these six SROs, fund an additional twelve SROs, so we would have one full-time SRO at each middle school? Well, as a retired Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services employee, I had a little bit of time to do some research. So, I worked for DHHS for twenty-three years as a health educator and an epidemiologist. I'm a numbers geek. So, I've conducted my fair share of data research analysis and grant writing. I went online in search of funding sources or grants. I found out that in twenty-seventeen, the Grand Island Public Schools received five-hundred-thousand dollars through the Department of Justice's COPS, C-O-P-S, hiring program to support placing four full-time SROs in their school. The twenty-seventeen grant covered seventy-five percent of the approved entry-level salary and fringe benefits for each of the next three years, up to a hundred and twenty-five-thousand dollars per position. Using the twenty-seventeen grant formula, LPD would qualify for sixteen officers. See where I'm going? We've got twelve middle schools, okay?
One minute.
I'm going to talk fast, guys. If LPD asks for twelve full-time officers to cover the twelve middle schools at a hundred and twenty-five thousand each, the grant would total one and a half million. LPD and LPS's twenty-five percent equals three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars, split that fifty-fifty, a hundred and eighty-seven-five each. So, the city budget for the police department would have to come up with a hundred and eighty-seven-five, and LPS would have to come up with that. I called the Department of Justice COPS program in Washington, DC, to inquire about the next round of funding, was told that the next RFA will be posted in the Federal Registry in the spring of twenty-eighteen, in the next two months. In other words, perfect timing if we choose to do so. The individual I spoke to said that they didn't expect any changes from the twenty-seventeen guidelines for twenty-eighteen. It's coming out exactly as it was. So, if LPD applies and is awarded this grant, twelve more SROs, full-time police officers, are added to the LPD budget for only a hundred and eighty-seven-five.
It's time.
So, I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next testifier, please. Don't forget to sign in.
Good evening. My name is Greg Jeffers. I live at seventy-eight oh one South Sixty-third. I, I'm also here with Parents United. Thank you for, for making time for us tonight. I don't know about anybody else here, but a hundred and twenty-five thousand to be an SRO, I might look at making a career change after the age of forty, for multiple reasons, not just money, obviously. I'm here tonight, I, I'm a parent of three, all of which are in the, the Lincoln Public School system. I've also been a Lincoln resident for twenty-three years. I've come tonight to hopefully help convince you all to do what you can, to take the steps necessary to, to reach this number of twelve, to add an SRO to, to each of our middle schools. Again, I did some research on my own to see where LPS falls within the realm of, of neighboring school districts. So, I made phone calls to Millard Public, Papio, Bellevue, Gretna, OPS, and Grand Island Public Schools. All of those school districts have one SRO in a middle school and a high school. So, why is Lincoln so far behind here? I, I know LPD does a, does a wonderful job with, with the resources that we, that we've given them, but it's, it's been obvious to me how, how understaffed LPD is, in my humble opinion. We've been, we've been told that response time is, is ten minutes to get to any place if an emergency happens. It can be up to ten minutes. I would, I would plead with you that, that we need these SROs, again, for, for one main reason, to be a, a first responder in the event of an incident. You know, everybody saw the news, what happened in Maryland, and how, within sixty seconds, that SRO was able to, to stop a threat from continuing. There are, there are risks to having somebody in the school with a firearm. There are also great benefits. Corey mentioned a few. To have somebody there as a mentor, as a role model. As part of our ask, we would also, we would also like there to be some involvement at the elementary school level. The, the earlier that we reach kids and, and are in their, are in their minds as far as a, a positive role model for a law enforcement officer. I know someone after me is going to speak about specifics and, and how that played a role in his life. Let me move on here. If we are truly interested in keeping students safer at school, at a minimum, we must find a way to fund professional SROs in all middle and high schools. When we have taken that step to add SROs to the middle schools, again, we also feel there needs to be at least some involvement in the elementary school level. The earlier we can reach students, the better chance we have for positive outcomes down the road. There are, unfortunately, there are no perfect solutions to the school shooting problem. You know, I listened to, to you, to Carl speak about, you know, there's, it feels like there's no safe place, and, and, and it's true. You know, I, I hate to get emotional about stuff like this, but it's tough. I just got to move on. Just dropping kids off at school is, is hard. In closing, I'll just, one of the, the observations that I've had as being, sorry, involved in Parents United is just the observation as to-
One minute.
Thank you. As to how reactive we are as a community, and whether it's LPS or community in general, it just floored me how reactive versus proactive we are. It seems like it takes something down in Florida to happen for us to wake up and get our heads out of the sand and do something. If it truly only takes a hundred and eighty-seven thousand to protect our kids, are you guys going to be willing to stand up, or for someone like me to stand up and say, "Why didn't you do this if it's only a hundred and eighty-seven thousand to at least have another layer of deterrent and defense and mentorship in place"? I wouldn't want to be in your shoes. So, just please help do what you can. Thank you.
Hey. Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify? Please come forward.
Good evening. William Patrick Conway, one five four five Garrett Lane, apartment one oh one. I moved here to Lincoln, Nebraska, nine months ago. I came here from beautiful west coast of Florida. Over the winter, I questioned that. I came here to get a job, working with, working for the state of Nebraska for emergency management. When I came here, my desire was to go to work, take care of my family, and try not to make any waves, try not to get overly involved in anything more than I absolutely had to. I had enough responsibilities with my family, with my job, and with my responsibilities at church. I didn't need something else taking my time. And then, when I found out what was going on in our schools and how school safety seemed to be almost an afterthought for most of our schools here in Lincoln, I had to get involved. Because in the nine months that I've been here, I've come to fall in love with the city of Lincoln. I've come to fall in love with the state of Nebraska. I've come to love the good life. People here are remarkably friendly. People here, for the most part, are very good-hearted. People here, for the most part, really embrace the pioneer ethic that make, that made this state great hundreds of years ago and continues to make this state great. But the reason I got involved in this is because I have a fourteen-year-old son who's a student at Scott Middle School. Next year, he's going to be going to Lincoln Southwest. I can't imagine what would happen in my family if we found out something had happened to him at school because the security of that school had lapsed. If something happened because we found out that the security of his school was not where it needed to be. I come from Sarasota County, Florida, where we have school resource, where they had school resource officers and resource deputies in just about every school. And my son knew who his was at his middle school there. I had a chance to meet him and interview him for a good hour one afternoon because of the college program I was in. He needs to have that in this school now. His classmates need to have that in their school now. The boys and girls that are coming up in the middle school next year need to have that in their school. We can't allow our students to be unsafe. You just said this, that the, the deal you guys passed, I won't say the BS word, but I mean it with this deal, because that's what I think it was. Because like you said, it's just feel-good legislation, going to do absolutely nothing because the only thing it's going to do is make the law-abiding people do what law-abiding people do. This is your chance to do something real, to do something that has impact. And if you can't, we're going to find people who can and will. All of you are sitting in seats that are filled by people that are voted for. And if you can't do this for my son, if you can't do this for our children, we'll find people who can, and we'll fight like hell to get people in those seats who will do what needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next testifier.
Hello all. My name is Joe Fulmer. I live at twenty thirty-two South Forty-Fifth Street. I'm a member of Parents United. I am a lifelong Lincolnite. I'm a father of five. I currently have four children in Lincoln Public Schools. And in light of recent events, and, you know, thinking about going through this process and, and, and the things that we've learned in meeting with the chief and, and LPS and so forth, I feel a little bit silly that I didn't ask these questions before now. But I assumed, I went to, I went to Prescott Elementary, I went to Irving Middle, well, it was junior high because I'm old back then, and Lincoln High, graduated from Lincoln High, and we always had a police presence in our school. Officer Waze was my, I guess he was our resource officer, and I don't think they called it that then. He was just a guy that was there. He was our friend, and he was a, a good influence on us. And I was shocked to find out, when I finally got around to asking my kids, "Do you have an officer friendly? Do you have a police officer at your school?" And my older kid said, "Yeah, there's a cop that's surround, he goes to Southeast High." And he said, "But mostly, they just bust the smokers, and we don't really see them much." But my younger kids that go to Lefler and, and Holmes said, "No, we never see police." And, and that was astounding to me. I just couldn't believe that, that there was no presence there, and, and at least not on a consistent basis, unless something was going on, God forbid, there wasn't that involvement. And in talking to the chief, we brought him some ideas that he implemented immediately, which I was really impressed with. which I was really impressed with and continue to be impressed with his willingness to, uh, work with LPS, uh, on this, on this issue of school security. Um, and when it, it's about money, to me, I don't think any of you want to be on CNN or MSNBC or Fox News talking about, "Oh, we should've, we could've, we would've," you know? That's, none of us want that. And, yeah, okay, maybe having a police officer in a school for 10 minutes a day or half-hour a day here and there, uh, you know, a couple hours a week, isn't going to make a huge difference, but you know what? Maybe it will. Maybe building those relationships, and I understand, my son goes southeast, like I said, and there was a fight today, and the, and the resource officer, Jake, said he ran, passed him down the hallway, and was right there in the middle of it, like, right away. And I appreciate that. But I also think with the littler kids, building that relationship, like Corey mentioned, you know, of, of knowing that a police officer is somebody that can be trusted, that somebody that can, can be relied on, that somebody that can be looked up to, I think is something that would benefit this city in long-term. I mean, I hadn't talked to John Waze in years, and I reached out to him, and he was immediately there for me, you know? And, and, um, unlike Corey, I plan on being here next time, and as far as I know, John Waze is going to be here too. You know? And, uh, that's the kind of people I want our kids around. That's the kind of people I want your kids around, and grandkids, and nieces, and nephews, you know? Um, because I have no doubt that he would do whatever he could to keep me safe, to keep you safe, and to keep my kids safe, and the teachers, and the custodians, and everybody else in our schools that deserve that level of, of protection and, and, and safety. So I appreciate your time and your service. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to use the open mic? Please come forward.
Doug Stevens, 3801 Mill Road. I'm not here with anybody, I'm just a concerned citizen. Um, I'd, I'd like to echo, well, first of all, I need to thank you for your hard work. Uh, you guys are the ones that will take the blows, good or bad. So it's a thankless job, and I appreciate it. That being said, um, resource officers are awesome. I also went to Prescott, and also had Officer Waze, and, you know, there's not a lot of things I can remember, but I can remember his name, and he was a big figure in my life as well. Uh, so if, if we go down that road of resource officers, I don't want to see a grant. I mean, grants are great, but it's, it's temporary. We need to find a way to make it sustainable. United States came out with a program, Troops for Teachers, a long time ago. We have teachers in our organizations that are trained. We have custodians in our ranks that are trained. I would offer that we look at, if they are willing, if they would like to go with the police and get trained some more, that they're allowed to carry in our schools. Somebody said 10 minutes for response time, that's unacceptable to me. I think it's unacceptable to police. If there's somebody there that can be immediate assistance, that, that's perfect. That's tough for me to say, because I don't like firearms. I'm a military man. I use them, I conceal, carry. I don't like them. But guess what? It's part of our society now. And you can't put it back in the bottle. I wish we could. It's an emotional issue. Everybody's going to come out with, just take them all away, or ban them, or, you know, there's not a right or wrong. And that's why I'm glad I'm not in your seat. You have to make some tough decisions, and no matter what you do, somebody's going to criticize you for it. I'm just speaking as a concerned citizen. I, I thank you for doing your due diligence and really looking at the issues, and if you can come up with an answer, great. But don't just look at one idea, please. There's a lot of them out there. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to take advantage of the open mic?
Good evening. My name is Nathan Rice, 2501 North 46th Street. I don't have anything to talk about schools. I'd like to talk about, uh, my car accident. A few, about a month ago, I was backing out of my driveway, and I got hit by this car. And it was one of the most stressful things I've ever had to deal with. And first, I'd like to say that they're talking about 10-minute response times. When I called the police, the officer showed up very quickly and was very friendly and very professional, so I would like to congratulate the LPD on that. It made a very stressful situation, uh, a bit easier to deal with. What came afterwards, though, was I got a citation from the city for, uh, failure, backing out without safety. And even now, as I say it, I have trouble remembering what it was. And when I went looking through the city code, I found that it was, it was difficult to, to go through and difficult to find all the different parts in there. And so what I'd really like to talk about, what I would like to urge the city council and the city attorney to do, um, would be to take a look at the city code and try to make it a bit more user-friendly. Uh, specifically on the website, it's using these PDF documents. Uh, instead of one PDF, there's multiple PDFs, and you, it, it, it's an old type of PDF, so it's very difficult to, to search and to find things in there. And I just feel like in 2018, we could have a bit more streamlined system on the website. I went down to the university where I'm taking classes, and I talked with one of the attorneys there, and I just asked him for some help looking through there, and even he said that, yes, it's, it can be kind of confusing and convoluted. So I'd really like to see, um, the city code just kind of cleaned up on the website to make it a bit easier for people to find things. Thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to testify? Please come forward. I will entertain a motion. Okay, oh, you're coming. You got to get, if you intend on testifying, please come forward and sit in the front, so I know you're coming.
Richard Escuel, 733 West Cunningham. As I've been listening to these parents, I must be older than dirt, because I don't remember a police officer at my school and I's high school, so. And I was here in Lincoln. But I've talked to the city council many times, and what they're also bringing up is city spending. And I thought long and hard before I was going to say this, but I tried to compare our city organization to a known organization, and all I could think is the mafia. Because you got the mayor as Don, and the city council as enforcers. And the reason I'm bringing it up is, uh, the Sunday Journal-Star had an article on city sales tax revenue. The issue of the report began with a very ambiguous word, "assume." This report wants us to assume that 33% of the city's sales tax revenue is from shoppers outside the city limits. I question the accuracy of this report. The only possible way for non-residents to amass 33% of sales tax revenue is to count out-of-town students as non-residents. Now, the reason I call it the mafia, and I bring this report up, is because in that same pa- paper, the mayor is going to be asking to, for a point oh, .25% city sales tax to replace the one that's being, uh, ending in December. And this money would be used accordingly for street repair. And my question with, what I'm also going to bring out is, who do, who does this council and the mayor really represent? I have attended many council meetings. The council doesn't represent citizens of Lincoln, Nebraska. The university, downtown civic organizations, LES, and large businesses have greater influence on getting freebies from the city than us taxpayers. The millions of dollars handed out to large corporations has robbed our tax dollars for in- infrastructure. I've mentioned several local companies, which I won't name, have been given hundreds of thousands of dollars for projects. The Don, known as the mayor, hands out money like it grows on trees. The university and downtown Lincoln have an open checkbook. I attended a council meeting when LES used money for the development in southeast Lincoln. 600,000 plus was given to this area for local development. LES stated, "No city taxes were used to support their spending." When questioning the source of the investment dollars, I was told it came from their customers. Well, isn't this our money, our citizens? Shouldn't our money be used to update, upgrade equipment and services to all of Lincoln? I have questioned our state senators and council members on spending our tax dollars. I ask both to consider additional tax revenue for our city. I have proposed two additional re- revenue sources to assist the taxpayers of Lincoln. I propose the wheel tax should be expanded to help maintain our roads. I claimed this evening. You know, if we had more money for our roads, maybe we'd have less complaints. Additional taxes should be collected from people which don't pay these taxes and use our streets daily. That he, the city has to initiate a state law to check, to charge a levy to out-of-ci- resident citizens. To date, as far as I know, the council hasn't moved on this idea.
One minute.
All out of Lincoln students which use their vehicles in Lincoln should have to pay a wheel tax. I would wager these students use our streets more than 40% of our residents. Now, to fund these people's ideas is this next idea. I would also levy, propose a city earnings tax, which would tax all people who work in the city a certain percentage. The additional money would, uh, be used to pay for additional police, fire, and emergency services. And the ones that don't pay any city taxes now, they get this service for free, and I don't know where I go where I can get anything for free. Uh, the city earning tax could, uh, is levied by many cities in other states. The city earnings tax ranges from .5% on upward, depending on where you live. Now, I mentioned the largest-
That's your time, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to testify? Please come forward. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Move adjourned.
Say.
By Jane, second by Cindy. Please call the roll.
Caleb Beard?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Ray Bold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
We are adjourned.